Okay, we're gonna get started. Good evening, welcome to the November-December, I'm sorry, Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome our students and staff to back to in-person learning. And since this is our last meeting of the school year, of the, I'm sorry, of the fiscal year, I'd like to wish everyone a happy, healthy holiday season. This year's been a tough one, but we'll get through it together. And I'm hopeful that 2021 will be a great year. Ms. Good, can you please read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on December 5th, 2020. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believe that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on CATV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting. And if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Katamatory. Ms. Zalira. Mr. Delatorre. Ms. Connor. Mr. Cluffel. Ms. McGurk. Ms. Simons. Ms. DeKurian. Ms. Angley. Here, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I will first turn over the meeting to Dr. Johnson for the superintendent's report.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to share some important news from across the district. This report is actually going to be very brief tonight. First and foremost, we are about a month into the second marking period. Our K-2 onsite and remote students have successfully completed the fall administration of the DRA-2. And all grades three through 11 onsite and remote students have successfully completed the Form A administration of the Lincoln Assessment in math and language arts literacy. Our high school students have begun their instant decision days. College scholarship totals are beginning to add up. We have acceptances already from some colleges and universities such as Leichoming, Langston, Newman, Fisk, and Yale University. We're waiting on decisions from some schools such as Rutgers, Penn State, Oberlin, Montclair State, NJIT, Florida State, Eastern Carolina, Seton Hall, Scranton, Binghamton, SUNY Albany, Boston College, Cornell, Drew, Drexel, Hartford, NYU, Northeastern, Stevens, Boston University, and Dartmouth, just to name a few. So we're really excited about that. We wish our seniors the best of luck. I'm proud to also announce that tomorrow evening, our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is going to be hosting Mr. Kazito Kalama as part of our speaker series. Mr. Kalima is a Rwandan genocide survivor. Our program is going to be running from 5:30 to 6:30 via Zoom in honor of the International Day of Commemoration and Vigilance of the Crimes of Genocide and of the Prevention of This Crime established by the United Nations. The Zoom meeting ID and passcode will be sent out by email tomorrow morning. During this powerful event facilitated by Dr. Pollens, Mr. Kalima will discuss his experiences during the 1994 mass murder of the Tutsis and his rationale for opening the Peace Center for Forgiveness and Reconciliation. I hope that many will join us for this powerful event. On the athletic front, basketball and bowling at the state level have been pushed back and will now start in January. Track and swimming have been pushed into February. Wrestling and girls volleyball have been pushed until March. I am delighted to report that in addition to our already established co-op with WeHawken for lacrosse, we have just come together to agree on a co-op for ice hockey for the 2021-2022 school year. We have sent out a survey to current eighth grade students in both communities. And we'll be following up with surveys to high school students as well for their interest in participating in ice hockey next year. Finally, we have completed the Governors Educators of the Year Award selections from each school. Soon, we're going to be revealing the recipients. This year's talented group is simply amazing, nothing short of our groups from each years, each of the years in the past. They will be honored as they always are at our March Board of Education meeting. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Now, we will get to our student recognitions. Sorry for the delay, families, but we resolved the technical difficulty. So I will turn the meeting over to Ms. Rodriguez Gomez.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna get started. Good evening again to our members of our esteemed Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, families, and of course, the most important, our students joining us tonight via Google Meet as we continue to focus on social distancing measures. I am honored to stand before you today and introduce our talented principals as they take the podium and celebrate our students, you. I am sure all will agree that all of our students, both onsite and remote, deserve to be recognized for completing now a full marking period of instruction and moving into a new one during these most interesting times. While we are absolutely proud of all, the students we will celebrate here tonight have truly excelled and proven that no matter what, everything and anything is possible in Hoboken. So please give us your attention at this time as we celebrate them for doing their best to show us their very best. Pardon me as I admit someone. As is our process, we will begin with the Joseph F. Brandt School and Principal Mr. Bartlett. He will celebrate his selection, one of my old friends, at the podium and will then introduce the Connors Principal, Ms. Addy. And she will follow the same pattern, introducing our next presenters, Principals Shannon, Mara, and Picapeatra of Wallace Hoboken Middle and Hoboken High Schools respectively. Friends, thank you for your attention tonight. And with that, I would invite Principal Bartlett up to the podium.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez. Congratulations to Dylan Tesler, the Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for November 2020. Dylan was nominated by his homeroom teacher in fourth grade, Mrs. Farukh. He was nominated for having a positive attitude, discipline, perseverance, respect, kindness, and an inquiring mind. Mrs. Farukh said Dylan is a kind, compassionate, helpful, and responsible member of our class. He actively participates in every class and works diligently to excel in academics. Dylan treats his peers with kindness and is found to be courteous toward other members of our school community. He is the first one to lend a helping hand to his peers when they have difficulty completing a task. The quote that would describe Dylan is, "A river cuts through a rock not because of its power, but for its persistence." As principal, I couldn't agree more. There aren't enough words to do Dylan's positive attitude justice. Mrs. Farukh's fitting quote about persistence is on full display when Dylan wears his Jets and Knicks jerseys to school. Dylan, the payoff you will experience one day for your persistence sticking with those two teams will be legendary. Dylan was very proud when his group made it to the second round of the New Jersey Steam Tank Competition last year. He's been a student of the month four times. He's also collected money for pennies for patients last year, raising over $1,000, the third highest individual total at Brandt School for money raised by one person. Dylan is an asset to school because he is very hardworking and disciplined. He works tirelessly to finish and he missed work if he is ever absent. He prioritizes his classwork and shows enthusiasm for all school initiatives. His work ethic and behavior are exemplary for his peers. Dylan takes pride in helping them with technology glitches in class at any time. He will jump at any opportunity to help his friends with any assignment. Outside of school, Dylan likes to play sports such as soccer, basketball, baseball, and football. He plays on a travel soccer and basketball team and has some of the best teammates ever. He said, "I want to go to college where I can play one of those sports. In the future, I'd love to have a job that involves sports or sports business." Reflecting on receiving this award, Dylan said, "I feel inspired and love to go to school every day because my teachers and friends push me to do better in a lot of ways. I feel proud because only a few people get this award per year, and I know that my hard work has paid off. Since I'm receiving this award, I would like to thank everyone who helped me along the way, such as my teachers, my family, and Mr. Bartlett." Thanks, Dylan. That means a lot. You got it. Please join me in another round of congratulations for the Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month, Dylan Tesler. At this time, I would like to welcome to the podium the Principal of the Thomas G. Connors Elementary School, Mrs. Juliana Addy.
I would like to congratulate Amy Morales for being the T.G. Connors District Student of the Month for November. Amy is a third grader in the Stacy Spinson's remote class. Amy, let me start off by saying how proud we are of you. Your first marking period grades are absolutely outstanding. You are a smart, hardworking third grader who has a voracious love for learning. You're always ready and eager to learn new things. You come to class with a smile on your face, ready to take on the day. You are a self-starter and always have the best interests of others ahead of yourself. You take pride in all that you do, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom. You are a friend to all students. Amy is also an excellent writer. Amy just wrote a Thanksgiving essay on what she is thankful for. More than anything, Amy is thankful for her family. Here is a little bit more about Amy. Amy's hobbies are drawing, basketball, soccer, biking, and crafting. She has no pets. Her favorite subjects are art, music, math, and science. She also enjoys gaming. Her favorite types of books are chapel books. She absolutely loves reading. When I asked her how she felt when she found out that she was student of the month, she said that she is so proud of getting the award because she's been trying to get the award for the past three to four years to receive the student of the month. She also shared how much she absolutely loves both onsite school as well as remote learning. Amy, we are so proud to call you a Connors Koala. You are kind, you are a friend to everyone, you always try your best. I want to congratulate you and your family as I know that they are so proud of you as well. Congratulations, Amy. At this time, I would like to call up Principal Martin Shannon from Wallace Elementary School.
Thank you, Principal Addy. Good evening, everyone. Hi, guys. We are here tonight to celebrate Tatiana Vargas, our Wallace School Student of the Month for November 2020. Tatiana is a fifth grade student in Ms. Halcheck's class. Tatiana was nominated for student of the month by her teacher, Ms. Halcheck, because she is hardworking, she's a hardworking student who puts an outstanding amount of effort into her schoolwork and has made great progress in all academic areas. Tatiana was also nominated for her patience, helpfulness, and ability to cheer classmates up when they are down. She always tries her best and sets an excellent example for other students. As Tatiana's principal, I appreciate the quiet confidence and kindness she exudes. Her caring, respectful demeanor creates space for everyone to feel included. Her hard work and dedication to our academics allows her to be a leader by example. I am proud that she is our student of the month. Tatiana's teacher describes her as patient, kind, cooperative, and respectful to everyone around her. She is an asset to Wallace School because she displays all the qualities of a model student and citizen. Tatiana has received several Peace Pal nominations and consistently receives honors for her hard work and progress in school. Her favorite thing about school is seeing her friends and classmates. Outside of school, Tatiana loves to learn TikTok dances, go on YouTube, and play games with her friends. Tatiana has expressed that she is definitely going to miss everything about Wallace School when she graduates. Well, our Wallace School community will miss you too, Tatiana. Until then, we look forward to an amazing year with you. Let's hear it for Tatiana, our Wallace School Student of the Month. I have this very well given to you tomorrow, Tatiana. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Ms. Mara, Principal of Hoboken Middle School.
Thank you, Principal Shannon. Maxime Schistler has been described by his teachers as diligent, eager to participate, and a model student. Nominated by Mrs. Loughlin and Mrs. Generali Lyons, Maxime has been nominated for his exemplary performance in the classroom, his dedication to his schoolwork, and his caring nature. Mrs. Loughlin shared Maxime is a model student in Hoboken Middle School. He is always eager to participate and helps out with the class. He has incredible curiosity and friendly disposition that makes all the kids feel comfortable in the classroom. Ms. Generali Lyons shared Maxime is a fantastic student that every teacher wishes they had. He is outgoing, positive, kind, ambitious, and you can tell he always has a smile on his face even behind his mask. When speaking with Maxime, he shared that when he found out he was student of the month, he was very surprised because he didn't think he would be student of the month. He also appreciates it very much because he has been trying very hard to get good grades and has been studying very hard to get optimal test scores. He also shared that he definitely prefers being onsite to remote. Maxime shared some interesting information with me about himself. He speaks three languages, French, Dutch, and English. He was born in Belgium and has traveled to Japan, Singapore, Indonesia, and the Canary Islands. He visits Belgium quite often to visit family, but he said he prefers the Canary Islands because of the beautiful weather. Maxime plays ice hockey on lacrosse and is a regular at the skate park on his scooter when he has free time. If he were to give advice to younger students, he would say, "Be prepared to study hard. It's not elementary school anymore. Be prepared for all of your classes." Maxime's sister, Annaleen, helped me gather some words from his friends and families. His friend Arjun shared, "Hard work is a trait that Maxime definitely possesses and has for the past 10 years I've known him. His hard work and determination have finally prevailed." Lucas shared, "Maxime is a hardworking kid and would always be a good and respectful person to the teacher when I was in class with him. Outside the classroom, he is a great friend and is always the best person to be around. He is genuinely kind and a funny person who always shows empathy for others. He brightens a room." And finally, his friend David shared, "I'm so happy for Maxime to win student of the month. He really deserves it. Maxime has always been a great friend. He is fun, kind, honest, and helpful, and I really appreciate how nice he is to me. In class, he's always helpful, and he helps me when I have questions on our classwork. He is always respectful and on task with the teacher. Congratulations, Maxime. I'm really happy for you." Your sister, Annaleen, wanted to share something about you as well. "Maxime, I'm really proud of you. As your big sister, I know you can be annoying, and sometimes, actually, a lot of the time, you get on my nerves, but you are still caring, funny, smart, and every day I somehow learn something new from you. I am proud of you. Love you always and congratulations." And Mom and Dad shared, "Maxime continuously surprises us with his creativity and willingness to do good. He started stunt scootering, which I didn't know existed, which allowed him to make new friends, to be more active, and learn cool new tricks. We are very proud of him and that he is student of the month." Please join me in congratulating Maxime Schistler as Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month for November 2020. I'll now call up Principal Picapeatra from Hoboken High School.
Hi, Ann. How are you? Nice to see you. I'm proud to announce our Hoboken High School November 2020 Student of the Month, Senior Anthony Henriquez. It is really hard to believe for me that when you came into my school six years ago, you would someday be a senior. And I think, oh my gosh, what a great young man we'll be graduating in June. I'm proud. His dedication to his studies as well as athletics is impressive. After speaking with his teachers and coaches, the one word that kept on popping out was leader. Mr. D. Benedetto shared Anthony has been engaged and a productive student. In The People Who Shake the World Class, Anthony engages in classroom discussion and is a leader in the class. He helps students, he interacts with all his peers in a positive, supportive, and respectful manner. Ms. Checo said during this short, remote period, Anthony demonstrated his leadership skills by organizing the discussion and making students comfortable in this new format. Coach Walker shared Anthony is the definition of what a student athlete should be. He works hard in the classroom and it carries over to the football field. He leads by example. He said he's coached football for a very long time, and he has never seen a kid, year to year, make the strides Anthony has made. He makes us all proud. For me, Anthony is a student that definitely possesses leadership qualities, and more importantly, he understands the importance of education and doing well. He has found a great balance in between his studies and his passion. Anthony shows great maturity, which is why he is so successful. He shows tenacity and perseverance, and it always pays off. What I personally love about Anthony is during PGP, his ability to have a conversation. He is someone who listens when you speak. He hears you out, but he also provides great perspective into any conversation. He does not yes you to death. If he has something to say, he shares it. He also has a really sharp wit and a wicked sense of humor, which I love. It is nice when a principal, as a principal, you can make a connection that is outside of my role as an administrator. Whether it is football or pre-calculus, I am talking to him about, it is always a good conversation. I also think he is someone who is willing to put himself out there. Football, as we all know, is a game he loves and he excels at. But he also took a chance on our new red wing wrestling program last year, and he did a pretty good job, to say the least. Anthony won his first 10 wrestling matches of his career after beginning the sport as a junior, being named to the all-county team during his first campaign. This year, Anthony was just informed that he won Player of the Year for Hudson County, and he was just named one of 12 finalists for NewJersey.com High School Football Player of the Year. I reached out. I reached out to a few of his friends, one in particular, Baby J., and he said that he's been friends with Anthony since he was about four years old. The words he chose to describe him, because he's a boy of few words, were tough and loyal. And he was kind of at a loss for words. He said he is just Anthony, funny and a dear friend. Anthony's post-secondary plans include attending college, while he's undecided now, he is applying, and a major in sports medicine. And I am pretty confident there should be some football and/or wrestling involved. When notified about the award, Anthony said he was excited because he's worked hard, and I could attest to that, and he's proud of what he actually did. Well, Anthony, so am I, and so are we. Well deserved, congratulations.
All right, guys, congratulations. Have a great night. You'll get your certificates tomorrow. Bye. Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Well, congratulations to all of our students recognized tonight. Keep up the great work. Let's see, now we're going to move into the business portion of our meeting. So for anyone who wants to leave, feel free. But with that being said, Ms. Good, do you have a business administrators report tonight?
You have an updated bills list in the packet, and also you have an additional board resolution approving Bergen County Special Services contract. And also for all board members who have not completed their board training, please do so by the month of December. You should have received emails today. Thank you.
Thank you. Other than finance, we did not meet as usual in committees this month, but did have an opportunity to review the agenda and ask questions on agenda items. Ms. Connor, would you like to share the finance report tonight?
Sure, hold on. Give me one second. Of course, I can't see. Okay, sorry. The committee met on Friday, December 4th at 6:00 PM. In attendance were Ms. Good, Ms. Angley, Ms. DeKurian, Mr. Delatorre, and myself. The committee reviewed and discussed all agenda items and recommends all for board approval. All agenda items are normal course of actions, and all accounts are in balance and in compliant. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do any other committee chairs have anything else they'd like to add? No? Okay, moving on to my report, I don't really have too much to say, but I would like to say that with regard to the 770 Jackson pilot, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Gagliardi, and I attended another education subcommittee meeting last Wednesday, December 2nd.
and I attended another education subcommittee meeting last Wednesday, December 2nd. We have remained consistent with our communications that until the city council makes good on the promise made via the 2016 resolution and makes payment to the Board of Education, no student, whether district or charter, can benefit from these funds. The outcome of the education subcommittee meeting was that the district and charter representatives would meet to discuss the advocacy efforts the charters have made for themselves. The board has been consistent that we are not opposed to the charter schools benefiting from this pilot payment via the state funding formula, as long as it is done in a lawful way that does not harm district students. Mr. Gagliardi has reached out to the attorney representing the charter schools to set up a meeting time, and we look forward to meeting with them. And since I flubbed my opening statement, I'd like to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season. Next, we'll go to public comments on agenda items. So we will move to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Can we take the roll, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Catamatory?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffel?
I have received a 10.04 and a motion.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Takarian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And now, we'll move to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
Ms. Roseanne?
Over the course of the past few months, you've heard me speak on behalf of my membership. From the beginning, we have advocated for remote learning for the safety of all students and all personnel in the district. I have used my words to communicate the fears and concerns and feelings of the membership. Tonight, I want you to hear the words of our members in the letters, emails, and texts that they have shared with me to give them a voice other than mine. Let us preface this by saying so much is out of our control. By the time you read this letter, schools may already be on a full remote schedule. But with temperatures dropping, infection rates rising, and many other districts on remote until mid-January, we felt the need to speak up. We strongly advocate for HPS to follow suit and go all remote for the second quarter. Staff, students, and families would have a bit of certainty in highly uncertain times. We all could plan for our classes, childcare, and better negotiate this highly stressful period. The unknowing is weighing heavily on the teachers and students with incredible levels of anxiety. So many of our students are apathetic and lethargic in class. Teachers are covering classes, and others are going on and off quarantine. And those who have been lucky enough to be healthy are wondering, will I be next? We are always waiting for the next email or phone call as to what the next day will be like. This has had a huge psychological and physical toll on the staff, and it doesn't need to be this way. Finally, students and staff are wearing winter jackets in classrooms. We also have teachers putting hand warmers in their pockets and scarves around their necks. It is now to the point that we question whether our administration even cares about us or our students. Why are they keeping us on in-person classes when so much is telling us not to? So I'm reading snippets of all the communications, well, some of the communications that I've received. I am sure you're receiving many emails right now about the issue of how cold it is in the classrooms, but I feel teaching like this is not sustainable. I brought in a room thermometer, and my classroom has been 67 degrees for the past few days. I wore long underwear when I had a shawl over my sweater. I just hope that these issues are taken into consideration as the weather gets colder. Hey, Ro, do you know if we are expected to go back now that we are officially in the red zone? So there was a miscommunication that we were in the red zone, that Hudson County was. So this kind of was disseminated around. To be honest, I wasn't comfortable coming back into the building in September, really, when we were in much better shape as a state of things are way worse, and this is scary. Good morning. I'm Roseanne. I'm a little concerned about the temperature checking. When I arrived this morning with another teacher, we were scanned and we tested at 92 degrees. We were told that the thermometer only goes up to 98 degrees. I don't know how that works, but we're clearly not getting an accurate reading. Additionally, a student was found to have a fever this morning and was still admitted into the building. She vomited all over the place, thus providing that sick kids are still coming to school. What kind of checks and balances are in place for these procedures? I hope you are doing well. After another Hoboken Public School and do sleepless night, I feel compelled to email you. Many staff members were bombarded with emails about roster changes and last-minute schedule changes. I was emailed a brand-new schedule where I am now teaching remotely half the day. On top of that, in order to accommodate all of the families that have now chosen to go remote, our class sizes have increased. At this point, the faculty of Hoboken Public Schools has given up enough of their time, sanity, and overall well-being for this job. We have earned the right to quarantine before the holidays if we so choose. At the very least, we should be remote during the short week we have time, so that we have time to get tested and not risk re-exposure between the test and the winter break. And those are just some snippets, and so I guess you may question, why am I reading them? Each time I came up here, as I said, I spoke about what I knew to be the situation and how I felt based on what people were telling me. But this is a real situation for these teachers. And while I think we can be proud of the fact that we have gotten to this point, and we've been in person, and maybe, you know, comparing us to other districts in the county, from what I hear, we're now will be the only one that is in person, I think the risk might outweigh the reward. When the decision was made to return to school full-time and be only one of the two school districts, we pledged our support to do what was best for the children and to work with all of you to make that happen. We have worked tirelessly to create a safe and welcoming and caring environment for our students. And you know this, not just because I'm saying so, because many parents have reached out to communicate this to you. We have worked hard to make sure the periods of remote offered the same rigor and fidelity to the curriculum that our in-person instruction has. We are now at a crossroads when the number of positive cases in Hoboken, Hudson County, and New Jersey continue to soar. We are at a dark orange level or high. According to Dr. Anthony Fauci, who I know many of you respect and follow, we haven't even hit the peak of Thanksgiving numbers, and it is only going to get worse with the Hanukkah, Christmas, and New Year holidays. He said the entire impact of the holidays day season could be felt into mid-January. And I quote, "The middle of January could be a really dark time for us." It is time for us to make the decision to return to remote learning for a period until we know it is safe for everyone to return. So on behalf of the staff, and on behalf of everybody, when I say this, I'm not just talking about the teachers, I'm certainly talking about the students, I'm talking about all the personnel. I really, truly believe that the right decision would be for us to be on remote and well into January, until we know that we have gone past the critical point. We love our students. We love being in class with them. I was happy to see them on Monday after remote, but it is a difficult situation, and there is something to be said about being at home and being safe. And there is a very different dynamic when you're dealing with the children and when you're interacting with them, and they don't have their masks on, and you don't have your mask on, and you can have this sort of connection, remote as it is, and not have this fear. And the situation in the classroom is not as you would think it is. I mean, yes, we do the best we can, and they do the best they can, but separating the kids constantly and making sure that they're socially distanced and keeping the masks on, it's not regular school. It really isn't. And I know that people think that it's a better way of teaching, or maybe I'm not even using the right words to say that, but you have to recognize, when the teachers are saying things, we're not just saying it because we want to be home. That's not the case. We're saying it because we know what is right for our students. You, as parents, know what is right for your children, but we also know as educators. And I really wish that you would take what I'm saying, and maybe I said it in kind of a muddled way, but I really wish you would take it to heart and really listen that this is just part of what I hear on a daily basis, and what I get at text on a daily basis. So please, really think very hard about what is happening with the COVID crisis over the next few weeks, and really consider what is going to be best for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. James Monaco?
I'm also going to read a couple of emails Roseanne shared with me from fellow members. My name is James Monaco. I'm a Hoboken resident, and I'm the corresponding secretary of the HEA. I was very surprised and disappointed that we came back to school this week. Upon returning, I was even more surprised and disappointed that schedules changed and even more students were added to classes. It really worries me because my mom and sister both have compromised immune system, and I'm afraid I can endanger them. Another member wrote, I was really hoping we would stay remote through 2020, and I'm very disappointed in the decision and worried about the situation. I know that remote learning has its drawbacks, but the biggest positive, and by far what should be the most important factor, is that staff feels much safer. Also, wearing masks all day is very difficult and uncomfortable for everybody involved, especially our students. They've even told me it's the number-one reason why they like being on remote. I'm worried again that with people either traveling over the upcoming break or visiting with family members and friends, they may contract the virus and not even know it until after we've returned, in which case, they would be exposing all staff and students around them. I would like to go back on remote immediately and stay off-site for a while, but if that's not being considered, then I think it's absolutely necessary we begin 2021 on remote until January 19th at the very earliest, but preferably a lot longer than that. I know it's a very complicated situation for everybody involved, but again, I think the safety of our students and staff should be the most important factor. Thank you.
Good evening, Christopher Munoz. I'm the first vice president of the Hoboken Education Association. Can you hear me? Because I couldn't hear anything back there.
Yeah.
Okay. So thank you. I always love coming to speak in front of this board, and usually, it's here for a more positive reason and a happy reason. I came here tonight because, as a duly-elected officer of the HEA, I wanted to bring the concerns of our members to you. I could have came up here with letters and emails and texts like my colleagues did, but I just thought I would share with you just a couple of things. Everything that this Board of Education has asked this association to do since the summer, we have done. We have shown up, we have done our jobs with enthusiasm and vigor and mask, and sometimes a lot of hand sanitizer, and we've done it smiling, and we've done our job vigorously and happily. But I want to point out, we are one of the only two districts in the county that are doing this. And it's not because they failed where you guys have succeeded, it's because they understand that there's too much to risk, something that this Board of Ed is obviously not grasped. There's too much, you know, at stake with the kids' safety, with the staff's safety. We are at dangerous levels, and we are only getting higher. But I came here tonight to tell you, we don't have to wait until a code-red situation to shut down the district, to go on remote. We had remote during the Thanksgiving break, and it was very successful. It was very successful. I got to see a lot of kids I hadn't seen because they were on remote, and I got to see them on remote because we were there. So it was great. I actually had my whole class and a contingent in a remote setting. But what I'm suggesting is, you do not have to wait to go into a red situation to go on full remote. Other districts have done it. We should be applauded. We already have more in-person instruction than any district in the county, and that's great. But now, with the holiday season approaching, I think the prudent thing to do would be go on full remote until we get through this second wave, because it's only going to get worse. This association has saved you guys from a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls, a lot of angry teachers showing up to meetings. This woman, our president, Roseanne Frasachi, has saved you guys from a lot of public scrutiny and criticism. She gets it every night from our members. I get it every night from our members. But we didn't want to come here and make a spectacle. We didn't want to do that, because that's not what this association does. We want to teach, but we want to do it safely. So we're asking the Board of Education to please do the right thing. On that note, happy holidays to you and your families, and I hope you consider what we're saying, because right now, we're waiting for a holiday miracle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just in the context of the other public speakers, I had planned to come and make these remarks before, I guess, the context of some of the other comments, so I just ask you to take that into consideration, and certainly, the instructors and teachers who have spoken, you have my utmost respect. So please just know, this was something I had sort of intended from the start to speak on this evening, whereas I can see some outside my thread something together that's not there, so I just felt that was necessary. I come before you tonight as a parent of two children at Brant, a kindergartner and a third grader, to say thank you. I am deeply, deeply grateful as a mother that my children have received in-person instruction since the end of September, and that this district continues to demonstrate leadership in the face of something that none of us really signed up to be in the role of a leadership position during the time of a pandemic. It is not easy, and the level of effort that's involved in making the decisions that you all are making on a daily basis should be commended and celebrated across this community. I know from talking to fellow parents how grateful they are that the tone and the communications that have come from the district, and in particular, from Dr. Johnson as our superintendent, have been thoughtful and considerate of how people are feeling during a really difficult time. People's anxieties are very high across the board, and I am routinely met by comments from my other parents that I have talked to, that they're really grateful about the information that's been disseminated, the clear communications that have come out to them to keep them updated, and everybody understands that you have to be flexible during this time. It is not easy, and one day, we think that we have an understanding of the world, and the next day, it shifts. And so I'm very grateful for all of the flexibility and care that you have taken at a time that is so difficult. I also wanted to speak in my capacity as a councilperson for the City of Hoboken, because the leadership that you have shown benefits so many of our families. And certainly, you know, I appreciate, as a mother in this community of the Hoboken Public Schools, what you've done for my family, but with my other hat on as a councilperson, I am incredibly grateful for what you are doing to make possible for our most at-risk families. And that's much of why I entered public service. My background is in social work, and I think it's my job as an elected official to care most about the most at-risk people in our community. And I'm very clear that the pandemic, as it goes on, is exacerbating educational outcomes for those most at-risk children in our community. The way that you have provided options to our families, whether they choose to do remote learning or in-person, I think demonstrates a very good understanding of the different needs of our families in this town, and I am just so grateful for that. needs of our families in this town, and I am just so grateful for that flexibility. Certainly, there's also a lot of research about uneven access to devices and internet, and I appreciate very much that you all, as a district, have tried to address those issues, whether it's providing tech support, technical assistance. We had something as simple as a password that we needed reset and got a response during the remote period for Thanksgiving holiday within an hour. I was blown away. And also certainly, my thanks go out to the Hoboken Public Education Foundation for making possible the Chromebooks initiative that has provided one to each of the students in grades 3 through 12. I think this time is really difficult for everyone, and often it feels like everyone's sprinting and running and trying to react. So it was really important to me that I thank you, both as a mom in the district, but also as a fellow elected official, because I think what you are doing is of great benefit to our community, and I realize that's not easy. And finally, I would be remiss if I didn't thank... I'm a parent at Brant, I know my experience at Brant, the administrators, the teachers there, they're going above and beyond every day, and we are doing our best as parents to support them through this. I thank you so much. I thank you to our teachers, the administrators. I just really would like to celebrate all of the great work that's been done and wish you all the best as we continue to try and make the best decisions that we can moving forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Robyn?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say a couple of things, because this has been quite the undertaking over the past four months. But I just want to speak on behalf of my administrative colleagues, and I'm so proud of them and the great efforts made by Dr. Johnson, Ms. Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, the Board of Ed. This is a huge effort we've gone through, not just the effort of all of you, it's the effort of the teachers, it's the effort of the families, the trust that we needed from these families. It took everyone to get this done, not just one group of people, but everyone. And I think we have done a really, really good job. I hear what everyone's saying, but I said this early on. I had to constantly ask myself the question, and I think we've all asked ourselves the question, what is in the best interest of the child? Right? At the root of all this is, that is where our center has to be. That's where I know myself, Ms. Mara, Mr. Bartlett, Mr. Shannon, Ms. Addy, that's what's at our forefront, what is in the best interest of the child. It's not an easy decision, right? It is definitely not an easy decision. But when in Hoboken have we ever had easy decisions? Right? But the decision we made is the right thing. I will say this on behalf of my colleagues, to Ms. Frasachi, Mr. Munoz, Mr. Monaco, we've talked about this. We are an open-door policy in our administrative offices. If they have concerns, if they have questions, they come to us. I've had teachers, I do daily check-ins, I walk in, I make sure. I know some are a little bit more nervous than others, and they're there every day, and they're doing the right thing, and I make sure I check in on them, as do my colleagues. And they're pleased with it, and they're happy to be there. Even during our remote period, teachers were in my school broadcasting out of their classrooms, right? They know where kids need to be, they know where they want to be. And I think we all know where everyone needs to be. And the most important thing we're doing when we keep the child at the heart of our decision is we're giving families a choice, right? There is a choice. You come to school if that's what you choose, or you could do remote if that's what you choose, right? I know the Board of Ed and Dr. Johnson has worked closely with faculty that had health issues or issues concerning, made accommodations for faculty that needed assistance in this area. So I think it's fair to say that what we're doing is the right thing, because we're keeping the child at the center of our decision-making, and that's the most important thing. One thing I shared early on with Dr. Johnson, I keep on thinking of the movie Apollo 13. Does everyone remember that movie? And there was a point when Ed Harris is really sweating it out in NASA's command center, and a guy is overheard saying that, "I think this is going to be NASA's worst disaster." And Ed Harris says, "I beg to disagree. I think this is going to be our greatest success." And I stand by that, and I believe, and I said this to Dr. Johnson, it's not an easy decision what we're all doing here. And not just us, my teachers, the parents trusting us, it isn't an easy decision, but we are doing the right thing. We're doing right by children. And in 10 more days, we're going to be on Christmas holiday. And I know, we did massive testing this weekend to ensure when kids came to school, they were healthy, because we didn't want to jeopardize anyone inside of school, right? I know at the forefront of all your decision-making is safety. And if we can do it safely, which we can, we do it, because we are here for educating the children. So I thank you for your decisions. My administrative team thanks you for your stance on this matter. It's important that kids are in school, and I'm happy they're there. So, thank you.
No more speakers.
Okay. Thank you. We are now going to be going into executive session, and that will be for the purpose of discussing legal items. We will not be taking any action when we return, so we'll just come back to close the meeting. And we will be approximately 45 minutes to an hour. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Who did the second? Thank you.
Can we take the roll call, please? Yeah.
Ms. Calabotori? Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffell?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Takarian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
You're in closed session.
Now 9:27, and we are just coming back from executive session. Do I have a motion to resume the meeting?
Second.
Can we take the roll call, please, Ms. Good?
Ms. Calabotori?
Yes.
Ms. Delira?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Cluffell?
Yes.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Takarian?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And with no further business, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Who did the motion? Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.